Legion.
All right. For the Legion's to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In location by Grace reform. Not here. Okay, roll call please.
Smith.
Here.
Charks. Bathke. Barrington.
Here.
McCardle. Dozier. Goldammer.
Here.
Sabers.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Approval of consent agenda items, items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of formal agenda items. Is there anything you wish to remove? Discussion. Motion by Mr. Sabers, second by Mr. Goldammer. Further discussion? Anybody in your eyes wish to address these? Roll call.
Bathke.
Yes.
Barrington. McCardle. Dozier. Goldammer.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries, citizens input. If you need to address the mayor members city council an item that is not on the agenda excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium. State your name and your concern. Presentations are limited three minutes. Items will be considered but no action will be taken at this time. Anybody wish to address council? Mrs. Lutzak?
Hi, I am Elizabeth Lutzak. I'm with Mitchell Main Street Beyond. I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the entire community. Over the past week, we've had some pretty good successes as Mitchell as a whole. Prey delights. We had a spectacular turnout with record number of float entries, large crowds, and we also hosted our first ever Christmas on Main Window Contest, which was really cool to see all the businesses come together. On Saturday, we also hosted the 30th Annual Christmas Shopping for Kids. We had over, we had 10 vendors, hundreds of kids, and thousands of wrapped presents go out the door. It was a tremendous success, but not due to volume, but due to smiles that we saw on kids and all the happy parents when they were leaving. So we just wanted to say thank you for the Mitchell community. We have really good positive momentum for Mitchell Main Street. We are grateful for the continued support of the city council, and we look forward to 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Wire, and I'm speaking on behalf of Pam Bathke. She could not be here this evening. Pam's words. At the last council meeting, you approved the plat for Ridge View on Foster. I want to express my disappointment in that process. I pointed out that within city ordinance, there is a regulation for the length of a city block. The code clearly states, quote, "Block length shall be between 400 and 1,000 feet and shall give regard to the need for convenient access, circulation, control, and safety of traffic," unquote. In the code, the definitions for the zoning regulations state the word "shall" is mandatory and not discretionary. "Shall" is not a guideline, as was stated by city staff. What if we were to take the recent ordinance about dogs and leash laws and read the use of "shall" as being only a guideline? Then it would read, "For verbal commands and remote pet collars to be deemed to be restraining an animal, it is only a guideline that the animal behave as if on a leash." No, there is no teeth in that, and that was not the intent. "Shall" means must. You cannot pick and choose the definition of "shall." The Public Works Director stated there are stipulations in the code that allow him to vary from the stated block length due to interesting features of the property. While this is true to an extent in 11-3-13 of the code, it also says, quote, "At the same time, the public welfare and interest of the city and surrounding area are to be protected and the general intent and spirit of these regulations preserved," end of quote. When I talked with an attorney prior to the last meeting, I told him that I fully expected this council to approve the plat because often votes are predetermined by this body and/or the outcome of the vote depends on what big names are bringing forth a request. His response was, "At least they should give it pause. Each council person will have to make a decision as to whether your point has merit. But I feel you did not give it proper pause. Your vote for the Ridge View plat was a vote against city ordinance. I could have thought that after the Greenway variance request on Island Court two months ago, that you would have learned to exercise more due diligence when voting. After the council approved that variance request, the vote was appealed by a neighbor. And for anyone in the public who may not know, a petition was filed with the South Dakota Circuit Court to vacate the city's approval on the grounds of the illegality of the decision. The applicant then decided it was in his best interest not to accept the variance granted by the city, but instead to build within the standard setbacks required by city ordinance. The applicant's decision got the city out of the hot seat. Unfortunately, with-
That's your time. Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council?
I'm going to address him at this time. Uh, I guess I'm in the hot seat a little bit with some of my constituents and a lot of Vikings fans in the room, remember Gary Anderson. They're 15 and one, and he misses the field goal. They're Super Bowl favorites. I feel like I missed the field goal on a vote a few weeks ago. I did not stand up to the people that put me here, and that I am very, very sorry for. It's not just because of Pam. It's the people in my ward. We had this discussion. I did not support them, and for that, I am sorry. I did not hold up my end of the bargain. And when I ran here, I said I'm not going to take anybody's money to run here. And I didn't do that. So I don't owe anybody anything except an apology to my constituents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda, Mayor?
No. The plat has already been dealt with. The rezoning is what's on the agenda. That's why they're able to speak to the plat.
Gotcha.
Okay. Anybody else wish to address council? Okay. Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for city council recessed as a board of adjustment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer, second by Mr. McCardle. Discussion. All those vary the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Hearing and action on the application for Corey Hauser variance permit. Corey Hauser has applied for a variance permit for a side yard setback of 1.3 feet versus 20 feet to construct a 24-foot wide by 20-foot deep metal carport located 1420 East Birch Avenue, legally described as Lot 12 Block 6, Fairview Edition, City of Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota. Set properties owned R2 single-family residential. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Planning Commission recommended approval, 2-2 with three absence, so therefore failed because it was a 50-50, not a 51% for them. It was published in the paper. Notices were sent up to the neighbors, signs posted. There was one letter returned in favor, none in opposition. The applicant would like to build a carport on the east side of his garage, so he can just get his vehicles out of the element. There's no sidewalk right there right now, so he wouldn't be overhanging any sidewalk, but it's 20 feet deep, so it'd be long enough for a vehicle. There's a bush to the south, or excuse me, you know, the north side that would block already some sight view from the alley. The applicant's here, if you have any questions for him, or I can answer any questions that you have for me as well.
Questions for Mr. Genegas? Let entertain a motion, no discussion.
Remind me again what the planning commission did?
It was 2-2 with three absence, so therefore motion failed.
It failed.
Oh, okay.
With no, with no complaints from the neighbors, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Mr. Sabers to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bathke? Oh, Mr. Barrington. Okay, second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion?
Question, uh, over, and how they would be sidewalk right away?
Correct. It would be outside of that, be 1.33 feet away from where a sidewalk would be at.
Okay. Did you want to speak?
So I did-
Come on up to the microphone. State your name and-
Well, my name is Corey Hauser. I'm the applicant for this. So it's not showed on there, but I did pour the driveway there in front of the garage, and the sidewalk was put in to there, and the carport would not overhang the sidewalk.
Further questions for Mr. Hauser? Anybody else wish to address this? Okay, we have a motion to approve. All those vary the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried. Hearing and action on the application of CJG Properties LLC Condition Use Permit. CJG Properties LLC has applied for Condition Use Permit to operate lodging house and supportive living home located at 918 Court Merrill, legally described as Lot A except the north eight feet, Block 3, University Edition City, Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota. Set properties owned R2 single-family. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, um, this was published in the paper. Notice was sent to the neighbors. Signs posted. There were six letters returned opposed to it. Planning Commission took this into two separate actions. They motioned to recommend approval of the lodging house, but that was 2-2 with three absence, so therefore motion failed. Motion to recommend approval of the supportive living, 0-4, four nay, three absence, so motion failed on that again. The applicant came to my office about this residence. Abbott House has used it for a foster care house, which per family definition, foster care does fit underneath that. Our ordinance states that four non-relatives in a nonprofit would be considered a family, no more than four. So he wanted to use this for a rental property, for student housing. For our definition in our ordinances, it doesn't fit that, so we decided to go with a lodging house and supportive living home. Two separate possibilities for him. It's a part of our ordinance that needs to be relooked at when we're doing our amendments for how we move forward with lodging houses and the Airbnb as NBRBOs. Applicants here, if you have any questions for him. All the letters that were received from the neighbors are in your packet. I have not received any new ones since that went out. I can answer any questions that you have for me.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Genegas?
I think all the letters were not in favor, weren't they?
That is correct.
There was quite a few letters, if I remember.
Yep, there were six of them. I have about 15 to 20 that went out, I believe.
Mark, is the holdup the more than four people of a non-relative?
Four, for a rental, yes, it would be that, which I know there are plenty of them around town that we have that have more than four non-related people living in them. It's not something that I'm out there looking for. It is a complaint-driven basis for how we deal with those. And like I said, it's something that needs to be changed in our ordinance. What number we put that at, I don't know, because is it per bedroom? Is it two people non-related in a bedroom? How are we going to police it with the staff that we have? Does that answer your question, Mike?
Yeah, yeah. So I guess I understand all the concern from the neighbors. I truly do, because I used to live over there by the detox. But I think, I think I'm right in saying this, that you could actually have four felons live there, unrelated, and they couldn't stop.
Correct.
So I have a little experience in this house that he's, I believe he's talking about putting there. Jeremy, come on. I have an employee that lives in one of these, and Terrible Eskey owns the house. Is he a model employee? No, he's not a model employee. He wouldn't be in the position he's in if he was a model employee. But that being said, I think he's on the right track, so if we disapprove of that, that's fine. I'm okay with that, but we have to find someplace to put these people. And they actually have, and Jeremy may know more about this, I'm just getting what I got from my employee who's been with me for probably six months, waiting to court date. So they actually have structure in that house, so there's leadership roles like secretary and treasurer. And if you fail an exam, I don't know if it's urinary exam, or they blow, or what, you're automatically kicked out. So there is some guidelines, I guess, but I do understand what you guys are saying. Would I want it next to me? Probably not. But be careful what you wish for, because he literally could let four felons live there.
Yeah, so how to start a base-
State your name.
Oh, sorry. This is Jeremy Gunco. How to start is, I actually had the, I currently do not own this house, so whether your decision, it's, I'm fine with it, whatever your decision may be, because my purchase is how it's contingent of your decision tonight. I did have a purchase. I was closing a couple days, and I went and talked to Mark, because my thoughts were turning into Airbnb until next August, and eight college kids in college, college room. Since then, I've had a couple of nonprofit organizations reach out to me about some different scenarios that they would like to do. One is this Oxford Housing, where there is basically a rehab facility for them, and there are strict guidelines in what they can and cannot do. I'm not sure if that's what it is, but it just leaves me options. I've also had letters from several, or calls from several landlords that currently have rental units in this area, asking me what this was about. So there currently is rental units in this area. But like I said, I do not own this house. It was an Abbott House. It does its fire sprinkler system. It's got a central reporting, fire alarm system. It's a very safe setting. And the knock, I think there's a knock on college kids. I have no problems with college kids with neighbors. Now, I do have problems with families with kids and dogs. You know, kids throw baseballs, break windows, you know, kids, just the nature of kids. There's nothing you can do about it. Or dogs going in the other neighbor's yards. But college kids, from my standpoint, from what I've had, I've never had any issues. They're usually well-behaved individuals, so. But like I said, it doesn't matter to me. I'd hate to start out with the whole neighborhood being mad at me for what we do. So that's, that's kind of the same. So it's one of those views. It's all about communication and the neighbors getting to know me and go from there. But that's kind of what my thoughts were in the two avenues. So any questions?
I did have a question, and it's difficult to tell from the pictures that were provided, but how many bedrooms are in the, would be planned as a part of the rental? And then the follow-up question to that is, is there enough parking for each of those rental separate units to have their own parking spot on the property itself?
On the property itself, there's probably enough for about five cars. There's a double stall garage. There's actually about three cars there. And then so like about three cars would be parking on the street. I mean, you probably could type fit six in, but that'd be a tight squeeze. But legitimately, I think five would be fine, because I actually met two other people there. So we had three cars, and we weren't even in front of the garage yet, so.
Other questions for Mr. Gunco? Okay. I'm going to guess a lot of you want to speak to this.
I got a question for Mark quick. What was their split, what was the reason for split vote?
They didn't really give a reason for the split vote on any of them.
They didn't say no pros and cons?
No, they did not. I think they went with what the neighbors, for the letters that they sent in, and that's why they went with what they did for the supportive living portion of it. The lodging house, they didn't really give a reason for that one at all.
Okay.
And I would suggest procedurally to do it the same way as planning commission did it and do as two separate motions as well, if you would, please.
And keep in mind, it's a positive motion whether you're voting yes or no. And then, correct, Mr. Johnson? So even if you make the motion, you're not necessarily tied to voting yes for it, so. Okay? So does someone want to make a motion before we get going, let the neighborhood speak?
You said you want a motion on both?
Yeah, separately. Separate motion on both, yes.
And Dan, just to clarify, that'd be one in regards to the lodging house and one in regards to the supportive living aspect.
You want to start, start with the lodging house, obviously, since it's on the first, or first on the list?
Well, I live in that, that ward, and of course, I've got calls and emails. And you know, I've looked at it. I've driven it. So I'm going to make, I mean, it was 100%. I had none in favor. So I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Make the motion to approve and then say you're going to vote it in opposition.
Correct.
So-
Sounds backwards.
Mr. Sabers is making a motion to approve at this point. Okay, is there a second? Okay. Well, a motion by Mr. Sabers and a motion by Mr. Barrington. Now, that doesn't mean they're going to vote for it, people, so don't get excited yet, all right?
The floor, more discussion?
Yes. It allows us to bring the floor forward for discussion, so anybody that wants to address this, please come up one at a time. We're addressing the first one on the list, the lodging house. Come on up.
I'm Carolyn Civic. My husband, Michael, and I live next door to 918 Court Merrill. Everybody who lives on the alley across from or next to the house is here, right? We're all here. We've all sent in that we would like it not to be approved. I've heard that I can't talk about what my letter said necessarily, because you've all read it, probably. My husband and I moved here 19 years ago. Mitchell does a really good job of selling itself. And at that time, my husband was, and still is, working for graphic packaging. And they also did a great job selling Mitchell. Come here, invest in a house, raise your children, send them to our wonderful schools. Look at all the opportunities that are in the schools for them, and all the activities that are available in the city. And we saw the neighborhood as a place that everybody was doing the same thing. And for 19 years, and everybody else, I believe about 30 years, right? About 30 years, everybody else has lived there. So it is a family neighborhood. No matter which way, which one of these requests go, that would change the neighborhood completely. It would no longer be a family neighborhood just by the numbers of people and the fact that they're not there for long term like everybody else is. Several of us are at retirement age. We've chosen to stay there just recently because it is such a great place. Why are we looking elsewhere in Mitchell when we like right where we are? So now we're worried that the marketability of the house would really take a tumble. We also, you know, we're laypeople when it comes to hearing how you guys discuss things or talk about some of the ordinances and things. So I did make a statement a little bit about the fact that okaying this would create more congestion, and it would increase the concentration of the population beyond what our small area could handle. And it certainly wouldn't conserve the value of the family homes that share the valley, the alley, that immediate area. Nor would it be in harmony with those residential properties either. And it would completely change the neighborhood for us as long-term residents, pretty much forever, or as long as it's owned, as long as that conditional use permit is in place. There's no ending date for that. And I use language that is from online, the Mitchell website, about zoning, why there is zoning, and about R2 zoning, because, not because you guys don't know it, but because us, the people who live there, the people, we're just people. We're just, we're laypeople. We don't know how that goes, but when we read those kinds of things in the zoning, the things that are written up about definitions, we feel protected by the city. We feel like the city has got our backs as far as supporting us after upwards of 30 years of devoting ourselves to our neighborhood and our city. So I wanted you to know that. We're just people trying to do our best. And we kind of feel like we're on the verge of having the carpet pulled right out from under us. And that's, that's all.
That's it. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I did want to say one more thing, because it was brought up, the Abbott House. That was a foster family, and that was a family. That was parents and children. It wasn't adults, and it wasn't constantly changing on a regular place basis. Sometimes the students or the kids, I call them students because I worked in the school district, and I used to see them on a regular basis. They changed in and out every now and then, but basically it was a family. It wasn't eight, 10, 12 people coming and going, or, you know, committing to only a week, or a month, or six months, you know, of time living there. You know, not really being part of the family neighborhood, basically. Did that answer your question, or?
Yes.
Yeah. To us, that was different. And I believe everybody else feels that way, too, right? Yeah.
You have still a question, Mr. Bath- You have still have a question, Mr. Rafferty?
I just wanted to know if they had any issues with the Abbott House.
Yeah, it was, it was run as a family with children. Yep.
Anybody else wish to come up and speak to this?
I, I just recently moved to the neighborhood. I bought the house that I'm living in right now on November 16th and within the process of me moving into the house and the week that I was living there and fixing it up and moving in, I didn't get any notification what was going on to the house right across the street from me. I, it wasn't until one of my neighbors approached me and informed me what was going to be going on, what was going to be happening. If I knew what was going to be going on across the street from where I'd be living, I don't know if I would be, would be buying the house that I am living in right now. Right now, that's a 30 year commitment to buying a house. I was not informed with anything to this day. I probably still wouldn't have known if one of my neighbors would have informed me with what was going on. Like I said, I moved to the neighborhood in expectation to live in, in a residential area, not across the street from an apartment home, not across the street from a lodging house or supportive living home. I guess that's really all I got to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We've lived there for 30 years, most of us. We've, Jeremy made a good point. There's plenty of rentals around there, unfortunately. We've seen SWAT twice down the road, guns pulled out. I found meth in front of my house this year from a rental and then they got busted. You guys need more homes here, not rentals. Families will come if they have somewhere to live. It's a good area. Used to be. He said he could park six cars there. Where is he going to park them when it snows? How's he going to move snow? There's a lot of snow that goes in that alley. What's his plan for that? I'm sure he has a plan, a great plan. Go out to the street and it has to be moved again because there's no room for the snowplows to go through. And it's a really narrow street right there. Usually two cars can't fit down when it's snowing. It's many things to look at, but it's a family place. We don't need homeless. They need a place. They do need a place. Actually, there's a place down on Lawler Street for sale right now. The massage place has seven rooms, bathroom, a kitchenette. It's a commercial area, be perfect for them. There's a solution, but it's not our place. What else was there? That's probably it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Wayne Kuns of the kidney quarter across the street. Had no problems with Abbott House. I used to work at Abbott, so brought me to Mitchell in 1990, actually. But just would be concerned, it seems like loose terminology, lodging house, supportive living. A house is great. I love neighbors. We have good neighbors. Just seems a little scary what could come in as a lodging house or supportive living house. That's, I guess, my concern. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm April Grenier. I actually live right across the street from where they are trying to do this at. And I do have young kids. I'm one of the younger ones in the neighborhood. So I have a six year old that rides her bike up and down the street, a 15 year old new driver that's driving down there and then a 12 year old. So my worry is just the safety of them. I don't want to have, you know, different people in there that would make me concerned to leave them home for a little bit of time, those type of things. I want them to still be able to get out in the road and, and be kids and do the fun kid activities that they do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any more? We have a motion and a second. Roll call this, please.
For me, how we vote again?
If, you can vote nay if you're opposed to it, okay? Even though you made the motion, you can.
And just a reminder, this is on the lodging house part. You will need a separate motion for the supportive living.
Okay?
Sabers.
Nay.
Goldammer.
Nay.
Dosher.
Nay.
McCardle.
Nay.
Barrington.
Nay.
Basky.
Nay.
Smith.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Okay, now we need a motion on supportive living portion. Yep.
I'll second.
You're making the motion, Mr. Barrington? Mr. Goldammer seconding it? Okay? Do you want to discuss this again or are you good? Okay?
Explain the difference, Justin, of the two.
So it's, it's two different types of operations. So the lodging house would be more of your, you know, short term rental kind of situation. The supportive living would be more of the, you know, like halfway house kind of program type thing.
Just, I think Oxford is already in town.
Yep.
So they were in a different zoning area?
They're in R4. The, the location that I know that they're in, they're in R4, which that is a permitted use.
That's high density. So R2 is single family, which is defined in the planning and zoning code as three people unrelated, four people unrelated.
It's still, single family dwelling is a family there. Actually, if you want to get really into the weeds of any of the rentals in town, they're all for profit, so none of them would meet our code.
We are redoing our planning and zoning code. Don't get all up in arms yet on that. I don't want to start a whole nother discussion and go out down a different path, but we are working on the planning and zoning code. Mr. Genigus is working on redoing that to bring it up to date. Last time we did it was 2012 and before that was 1980 something, I believe. So we are working on it. Don't get all up in arms over that. Any other comments or questions on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Dosher.
Nay.
McCardle.
Nay.
Barrington.
No.
Basky.
No.
Smith.
Nay.
Sabers.
Nay.
Goldammer.
Nay.
Motion fails. Action to set the date for board of adjustment hearing 12 18 23. Wayne Lambert has applied for variance permit for side yard setback of zero feet versus three feet and a rear yard setback of seven feet versus 16 feet for a 32 foot deep by 44 foot wide unattached accessory building with a door panel to the alley being built in the same overall footprint of the existing garage being torn down, located at 909 East First Avenue, legally described as Lot 4, Block 3, Applegate Edition, City of Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota. Said property is owned R3, medium density. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Barrington. Discussion. Anybody nice wish to address this? All those fair the most signify saying aye? Close nay? Motion carried. Reconvene City Council, entertain a motion for board of adjustment to adjourn city council reconvene regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer, second by Mr. McCardle. Discussion. All those fair the most signify saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Action to award bid for dump truck chassis project 2023 34 and combo dump body standard 2023 35. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Bids are open on November 21st at 1:30 PM in City Hall Council Chambers. We received one bid for each bid schedule. I State Truck Center bid on the dump chassis for $119,662. And sanitation products bid on the combo dump body standard for $45,565. The bid tabulation is attached for your information. And staff does recommend accepting the low bid from I State Truck Center for the dump chassis and the low bid from sanitation project, products for the combo dump body standard. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCardle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldammer. Further discussion? Anybody nice wish to address this? All those fair the most signify saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Authorization purchased equipment via Omni or Sourcewell contract to be in the 2025 budget. Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as per previous discussion, we're looking at replacement grounds maintenance equipment for Lakeview Municipal Golf Course would include one wide area mower, one 300 gallon sprayer and two fairway mowers. Total equipment amount would be $281,241. Interest would be calculated over the course of five years, over five years totaling $47,145.90 for this lease to purchase program. Staff recommends approval of this proposal.
Entertain a motion.
So this is the equipment that's to be delivered in 25?
Correct. That means it'll probably show up in August of 24 now. Yes.
You know that's the way it's going to work.
This is the equipment we discussed at a couple of meetings during budgeting. They don't expect it to arrive until 2025, therefore we're, we're giving them authorization to order it with payment being in 2025, beginning in 2025.
I move approval.
Motion by Mr. McCardle, second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion?
I want to ask the trade in value. They're not giving us anything for it. Isn't it worth us trying to sell it ourselves?
There's quite a few hours in this equipment. Jason, if you want to address that specific question with your knowledge on the equipment, I'd appreciate it.
Jason Gennery, Lakeview Golf Course Cemetery. That was what they were willing to give us upfront for, they were, really weren't willing to commit to anything more than that at this point. We always have the option of doing that or selling it ourselves down the road, but that's what they were willing to commit to at this time, so.
Are you trading in one piece of equipment for each piece of equipment you're getting?
Uh, it would be a couple of extra pieces because I had a couple wide area mowers that when we got this last piece, this last year, I held on to them because they had a lot of hours on. So I held on to them for parts and in case something broke down.
So I guess council could decide to put them on Purple Wave if they think you'll do better.
But we're going to be allowed to use these one more year.
Allowed's a loosened word, but yes, they'll get to use them.
So if they break down, we got nothing to trade them, yes.
Yeah, you'd end up.
Yes, in the end, maybe it's a win for us if they break down.
Yeah.
We've gotten some pretty decent rates on things we put on Purple Wave and then some pretty low rates as well. It's a gamble.
We have a year of use to determine how we want to get rid of them, I guess, is the bottom line. So, is that all right with you?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Further discussion? Anybody nice wish to address this? All those fair the most signify saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Action to approve Amendment 1 to Recycling Agreement A 2019 49 with Millennium Recycling. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. Amendment number one extends the city's agreement with Millennium Recycling. The original contract was approved on November 4th, 2019. Justin has reviewed the contract and he, he gave his approval. The contract will now automatically renew every year unless written notification is given by either party not to continue at least 90 days prior. And with that, we do recommend approval and I can answer any questions you may have.
And just to clarify, really the only thing that's changing is that renewal. We're at the, we were at the end of the term, so this just allows it to continue on a year to year basis.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Barrington.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldammer. Further discussion? Anybody nice wish to address this? All those fair the most signify saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Action to approve Agreement A 2023 61, memorandum of understanding between the City of Mitchell and IAFF, Mitchell Firefighters Association Local 4166. Ms. Zellwine.
Mayor and Council, this MOU would be a memorandum of understanding between the City of Mitchell and IAFF. That's our firefighters union. As you know, we currently have an approved agreement that's in effect from 2023 through 2025 and our reopeners only for wages. So this is an issue that has come up outside of those terms. Really what we're asking to do is amend our required minimum of hours that our part time employees must work to continue employment. We currently have 156 hours in the contract and we're asking to reduce that down to 96 hours. In addition, we're going to put some criteria on those 96 hours where they have to work a 12 hour shift for each quarter of the calendar year than the remaining hours they can do either in training or taking additional shifts. Before, they had to work more hours per year, so they only had to sit in the step for two years. 24 months plus hit the hours before they were eligible for a step increase. We're going to increase that to that they have to hit the number of hours each year and then sit in steps for 36 months before progressing to the next step. And that's just simply because they're going to have less time in each step. IAFF has reviewed this. We've worked on this cooperatively and they're also in support of the MOU. I can answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, we recommend approval of the MOU.
Okay, questions? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Anybody nice wish to address this? All those fair the most signify saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Action to approve Agreement A 23, excuse me, 2023 62, memorandum of understanding between the City of Mitchell and AFME Local 2922. Ms. Zellwine.
Again, similar to IAFF, the city currently has an approved agreement in place with AFME covered employees. Basically, that's all of our general non salaried, non management employees excluding prior employees. So think of the majority of our just regular employees. That agreement is in place from 2023 to 2025 with a reopener for wages only. We did, just, we're suggesting this MOU as a way to clarify how we're going to handle breaks with AFME covered employees in Palis transit. Currently, the contract says that employees are entitled to a 15 minute break for each four hours worked. Palis City Transit is a little bit different because they have scheduled bus rides. Some of the employees wanted to be able to take their breaks in shorter periods of time, maybe do 10 minutes here and five minutes later in between a scheduled ride. Other ones wanted their breaks scheduled into the shift. We're asking to amend this just to avoid future grievances about the interpretation of the contract. Both AFME and the city work together on the outcome of, or the format of this MOU and we recommend approval of the agreement or memorandum of understanding. Really what, basically what it's doing is clarifying for both the union and the city how we're going to handle those breaks for the bus drivers in Palis City Transit because it is a little bit different than the way the contract reads.
Okay, questions?
Move to approve.
Close by Mr. McCardle.
Second.
Second by, Ms. Basky. Okay, further discussion? Anybody nice wish to address this? All those fair the most signify saying aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Action to approve Resolution R 2023 88, approving the 2024 compensation plan for the City of Mitchell. Ms. Zellwine.
Mayor and Council, the resolution that's included in your packet is required by city council to approve annually. This resolution is what sets the wages and the number of employees for each position that the city has. In addition, we also have our part time wages also listed on the resolution in those positions that we hire on either seasonal or part time basis. The City of Mitchell did complete a compensation and classification review with Condrand Associates in 2023. That review compared the wages of 41 positions and comparable positions in 13 other South Dakota municipalities, Brookings Area Transit and the state of South Dakota. We did focus on positions that were not included as. We did focus on positions that were not included as part of the 2016 Compensation and Classification Review, positions that we had been having a hard time filling, as well as requests that we've received over the past, maybe seven years, as part of our union negotiations each year as well. The 2024 Compensation Plan does include reclassifying some positions based on the market analysis that the study already reviewed with council, and it includes equity adjustments for employees that have been employed for more than a year. That Compensation Plan includes 2% performance-based steps versus the previous 1.2% performance-based steps. That was to bring us up to other cities and what they were doing for performance-based steps. And in general, if you were just to look at the pay plan as a whole, the ranges are increasing 0.3% from 2023. Implementation of the Compensation Plan puts the City of Mitchell at 100% of market comparison, so we should be right at what the average was of those other municipalities that we compared to. I really can't tell you individual increases because that depends on what their equity adjustments were or if someone was reclassified into a higher position. And these, all of the union-eligible or covered positions that are listed in the pay plan were approved as part of the union negotiations city council conducted in our re opener as well. I think I covered everything. Oh, the addendums that we did earlier this year on wages included the implementation of the plan. That's what I was just saying to you. If you have any other questions, I can certainly answer it, but the 2024 annual budget does include the wages that are shown in the resolution, and we recommend approval of the resolution as presented.
Questions, comments?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody know who I should address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Securing an order that's O 202313 Rezoning Lane East of the Hospital and South of 8th Avenue to their existing parking lot. Be rezoned from Ridgeview on Foster Plan Development District and High Density Residential R4 to Medium Density Residential R3 and High Density Residential R4. Mr. Janagis.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, 7-0. I've not received any further letters or communication from anybody since the first reading two weeks ago. I can go through the history of it if you'd like me to again, or I can answer any questions that you may have for me.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Anybody know who I should address this?
Hello, I'm Kathy Wire again, speaking for Pam Bathke, who's not able to be here. I'm not certain the council has properly envisioned what the small lot minimums of R3, R4 zoning will look like. At the last meeting, Susan tried comparing her neighborhood to this one. Does she know the width of her lot? It's 160 feet. Does she know the standard widths of the lots on Nagel Lane behind Bridle Drive on the plat that she approved? 60 feet. 160 divided by 60 is 2 and 2/3. Can you imagine 2 and 2/3 houses sitting where her house sits today? Ridgeview will look nothing like the pro-build development she tried to draw a parallel with. Lot sizes along Pebble Beach, Augusta, Pinehurst, Sawgrass, and Country Drive all vary and many times are more than 100 feet, but never are they smaller than 80 feet. With a uniform lot width of 60 feet along Nagel, they will not have four-car garages such as Susan does at her house. There will be more people packed into a smaller space. Think of all those cars driving three to four blocks down 8th or Bridle, and all the people, the children riding their bikes, pet owners walking dogs, all of that amidst a large volume of traffic that will more than likely be speeding since there is such a long length before they turn. Now tell me, that block length doesn't matter. The R3 and R4 zoning that is being proposed should only be granted if the proper access points are in place to handle the population density. Currently, the design has not accounted for that. I would implore Terry Sabers of Mahi, Jerry Beck of MACC, and most importantly, Dr. Hillary Rockwell, the Regional President of AVERA and former emergency medical doctor at the hospital, to all prioritize access points for the development by, one, legally satisfying the city's ordinance on block length, and, two, ensuring access off of Foster Street is implemented from the beginning of the project, not just as a final consideration only if there is enough money left. Otherwise, you are using the public funds and grants you received to go against city ordinance and to jeopardize the public's safety and negatively impact surrounding neighborhoods, and that is not good stewardship. We can do a much better job with city planning than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who should address this?
Good evening. My name is Van Oyer, and I live on Roland Lane. And folks, I would just, this has been a long road, you know? It started about four years ago. And it was a mess then, and it's been running, Jerry has been good to deal with and had meetings. And we've been kind of painted our neighborhood as anti-development. And folks, we are not. We're not anything like that. We have asked for some concessions and some blending into the existing neighborhood that we live in on Roland Lane and fire steel and access. You know, I've got a little engineering surveying background, and I've done a lot of subdivisions in my life. And access is the number one thing. And in the beginning, we were told there's a parking lot. It's, you can't, we can't go through there. Nagel Lane can't go through. That's phase two. That's just not a good reason to push forward with this. Now, in, a couple of months ago, Terry said they got 2.34 million for infrastructure, I think from the Biden Infrastructure Act. Hallelujah. Last November 14th, just last month, they got 1.03 million. That's 3.34 million for infrastructure, and infrastructure only. So let's put access off of Foster Street like it's designed. You know, the block, the blocks are long enough, the Bridle Drive is gonna be 1,400 feet. In front of us, it's gonna be close to 1,180 feet. Don't you just, common sense? You want to run traffic in, give them as many access areas as we can? I'd really implore you guys to go that direction. And that's, and we would be very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who should address this?
I am Carolyn Knight, and I was at the very first meeting that we had back in November. I live at 1,700 Bridle Drive. Want to say thank you, Mike, for what you said, because after that meeting, I did want to call you and go over to your house and strangle you. But anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to lighten this up. I'm not gonna do things that are, I told Terry, I had a great conversation with him after the second meeting. I'm not, my background is Christian education. Okay, so I would feel very comfortable here talking to you about a Bible story or whatever, but, so this is a little bit out of my league, but I just want to bring up a few things. And I, I did not talk at all at the last meeting because I just simply wanted to listen. And so, my name is Carolyn Knight, and I know in the paper, I was put down as the confused neighbor. And so, if the paper is here, I really wasn't confused. I was just trying to make a point in a fun way about the groundbreaking that was held and put in the paper on November 1st, and me getting my letter on November 3rd about this whole proposal. So I was trying to be funny, but I don't think, I don't think that came off as being funny. But anyway, so I did, I just, at the last meeting, I just chose to listen. And then I did catch Terry out in the hallway there, and we visited about a lot of things. And I know one of the things at the first, very first meeting, and that was with the city planning commission, I know mayor asked me, well, when you bought that property, did you know what it was zoned? And I said, you know, the realtor that I talked about, that probably the new hospital would be built there and whatever, and I had no, I had no idea. And I, you know, I did not know about R2, R3, or R4 until this whole thing started. So I did find out from Terry that it had, it had been zoned as highway business for potential hospital when I had, when we. When we, when we bought that, when we bought that. Another comment I made to Terry was, I really think COVID saved us. And he looked at me like, what are you talking about? I've never said anything good about COVID. But I just know that when we originally started these meetings, there was a lot of tension, and we did. I was hoping all of these people that were here were gonna be here for our community. So I'm disappointed in that, but we did. This whole room was full of people saying, we just don't think this is the best plan. And we pleaded our case, and you all voted against what we were asking you to vote for. And so, you know, sometimes when this goes on and on, you do, you get beat down. I think there's a lot of people who are not, they're just, they're just whatever, because no matter what we say, you're gonna vote the way you want to vote. And I just know that we live in America, and I think everybody should have their right to say, this is, this is good, this is bad, or whatever. What I will say, and I told this to Terry, was that I know you, you went back to the drawing board, and you did, you made some changes. I mean, there was, there was proposed back then, I think that Mark Fox was probably in charge back then, and then I don't know who the guy in the big cowboy hat was back then, but I remember the cowboy hat. And I just remember, you know, thinking that I felt we were not really listened to. I feel like when the, when the neighbors got up, it was very contentious. And that's, that's awkward when you are, you are in that neighborhood and you have people just pshawing everything you say. But I mean, at that time, they wanted to put a gas station down at the one end, they wanted to put a, some kind of apartments for the people who go south for the winter. I mean, things that he said, like the guy with the cowboy hats, oh, these, these are common in Portland and Seattle. And, you know, we live in Mitchell, South Dakota. Those things are not really things that we're going to deal with here. So I do want to say thank you for going back to the drawing board, and I think you have made some improvements, but I think we can do better. I think we can do better, and that's just all I'm asking for, is just to make a pause on this and just maybe think, is, are there some things that we can do? I mean, one of the things that I think about in our city is, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, what, how many houses are you talking about? 400 houses or something? We have a huge, huge problem with childcare in this town. We don't have enough places for childcare. Would that be an option? Putting, putting a center there? I don't know. A center there and a park and whatever. I'm just saying, I think that we could maybe think outside of the box, and maybe there are some other options for that. The other thing was about, the, I had mentioned having the cart before the horse with having the picture in the paper, then I get my letter, and nobody said, oh, oops, maybe we should have waited with that. So, you know, I said to Terry, tell me, why was that done? Why did we put the picture in the paper? We've got this meeting yet tonight for approval before it is really approved. So I don't know about you, but when I bought my house, I did not take a picture of me at my house, put it in the paper, and then hopefully the bank was gonna approve everything. You just, I mean, to me, you just, you don't do, that's not the way you do things, okay? So I'm all, just saying, I would just like somebody to say, oops, yeah, maybe, maybe that wasn't the best idea. But in our paper, again, this is dated November 22nd, it says, "The council will consider approving and adopting the second reading of the zoning ordinance in early December. If adopted, the project could officially begin, although a groundbreaking ceremony was already hosted at the development." So for me, as a neighbor, that's just in there, ping, you know, here we are. It's, it's an after fact, it's an afterthought. The other thing is, we're talking about, I said to Terry, I said, you know, it would make me and the neighbors, I think, happier if we could say, can we at least put a cap at $350,000 on the houses? I said, we have four children, all grown, all married, they would never come back to Mitchell and live in a house that is on a 60 by 100-foot lot. I'm just saying, they would not come back to Mitchell and do that. And I get it, I get it, because we are, our goal is to build houses on the lower end of the market range. And so I'm sitting in my forever home, and so now we're gonna build these, we're gonna build these probably more like government houses, and I'm just.
No, these are workforce houses, and they are capped at $385,000.
On, on.
On these lots will be workforce, not affordable.
My understanding, and maybe you can correct me on, yes.
Because they are workforce housing, which is capped at $385,000.
Okay, so that.
So it's not low-income housing.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying that, because that's what it sounded like, and I, I'm gonna have to be in my house for a long time, if you understand, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be trading, trading around. The other thing is, there are, there's still the questions on Nagel Lane, you know, are we gonna be able to go through that whole, you know, make that whole thing, or we're gonna do half? Do we have the money to do the whole thing? Block number three, which is Peace Place, there's three houses listed, and I asked Terry Sabers, I said, what's the plan for the rest of that, you know, property? And I was told, we're not sure yet. We're not sure, we're not sure if we're gonna put townhouses there or what we're gonna, what we're gonna put in there. So there are some things that are not, that are not set in stone. The other thing is, you know, I, I'm not a political person, I don't get real involved, but the things in this town that I did get involved in, I don't know how many of you were around when it was proposed that we closed Longfellow School? Were any of you involved in that when they wanted to close Longfellow School?
That would be school board, which is entirely different.
Right, but I'm just saying, as, as a, as a concerned citizen, that, you know, our children attended there, now we have a beautiful new school there. That would have been a mistake to have eliminated that school. We also talked, I'm just saying, you as a council have so much power to decide so many things. But even our high school, they weren't gonna build a new gym, they're gonna build this brand-new high school, and we're not gonna build a gym for our youth. And we all know, I know some of you have had kids playing wrestling in there, playing volleyball in there, playing girls' basketball in there. That place was a mess 30, 40 years ago, you know? And so what happened? People did, we took out a petition, we said, no, wait, let's, let's come back, let's think about this. And that's what I'm just asking you to do, is to just take a pause and think about this, and are there other options? Are there other options for this? You know, the other thing was, my husband, when he, when he was healthy, he was, he was very much a Hunter Fisher person, and he was on the Lake Mitchell Committee, and back in the day, you know, they recommended, we can't take out the reeds, we can't take out the cattails, we can't do that. That is our filtration system. And again, that decision was made to rock all of the, rock all of the, all those places by the lake, and we all know that we, we should have taken pause on that, too.
You're kind of getting off track here, so please keep it to the point.
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying, let's, I'm asking that sometimes if you do take a pause, you have more time to think and maybe come up with some other solutions. And that's, and that's about what I have to say. I know you don't have an easy job, I know we're talking about needing, needing more housing, I know that. What I'm saying is, I, I go five times a week over to Parkston. Tonight, I counted cars. I saw 50 cars between Parkston and Mitchell. So I'm just saying, is that, is this where people want to be? I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, are we, are there some things that we can do to make this place more attractive to other people? And so just take a pause, and that's all I have to say. And I know that what I say isn't going to make a whole lot of difference to you, but I just feel like I've had my chance to, to, to say what's on my heart. Thanks.
Thank you.
Since this is not timed, may I speak again, or am I finished?
You make a brief. You make a brief, please.
My name is Kathy Wire. We feel strongly about being present for these council meetings concerning Ridgeview on Foster, because there are still so many unanswered questions and loose ends with the planned development. We are not opposed to having a reasonably planned development situated there, but we do have serious concerns in several areas. Have our fire department and emergency services been consulted about access for this development? Has anyone asked them if this is a safe plan? Are there enough and proper access points, turnarounds, and fire hydrant placements? Will there or won't there be access off of Foster, included in Phase 1, to relieve traffic congestion and provide construction access? What is the deal with Lot Number 1, Block 1? It is shrouded in mystery. Terry Sabers announced that it is not available for sale because they are in the works for a deal on that. He does not say with whom he is dealing. It sounds like an under-the-table deal. This is a public forum, dealing with public information. Why is Lot Number 1 not available for sale? In the plating diagrams that have been made available to the public, utility easements are indicated. Some of these go right through the middle or back ends of the lots. Will owners be able to plant trees, build sheds, or garages on top of those easements? There is a 40-foot-wide utility and drainage easement going through the middle of Lots 7, 8, 9, and partially 10 of Block 1. Can an older owner build over it, or are there restrictions and requirements? There are 40-foot-wide easements cutting 20 feet through the back ends of 34 more lots in Blocks 1, 5, and 6. Will there be building restrictions involved with these easements on all these lots? Why did the city council choose to ignore and break city ordinance regarding block length within the city? Isn't this against the law? The city block length between Foster Street and Nercia Drive is planned to be 1,079 feet. On the other south side of the development, you already have an existing 1,399-foot block between Foster Street and North Calhoun. There can still be changes made to amend the illegal length between Foster and Nercia. We've heard nothing about drainage. Has there been a hydrology study and how the construction will affect drainage? At initial, at initial meetings in 2020, a neighbor on Fire Still Drive said he never had water in his basement until the houses on Roland Lane were built. Afterward, he had water in his basement, and he had to install drain tile and sump pump. Will existing storm, storm drainage be utilized? Are there any drainage plan updates? And who will maintain the retention pond? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larson, I'm guessing you're going to answer some of those questions?
Well, the, a lot of the comments that have been made are to the plat, which has been approved and recorded already. And so tonight, we're talking about the zoning, right? And so nothing will change with the plat and the way it's laid out. It just, so it clarifies.
Mr. Schrader, the drainage was engineered, correct?
Correct, yep, that's required to follow city ordinance.
Yep.
Mr. Poler, or Chief Polerice could speak to Fire and EMS's review.
Have you had any issues, Mr. Polerice?
No, I spoke with Schrader on this. And as long as it's laid out the way it is, we have access in and out of it with all of our equipment. And that the hydrants will still be placed as they normally would be per ordinance.
Thank you. Did you have something to say about?
Just his comment about the plot being approved, that's true, it is. But it is illegal. I want to be very clear, it is illegal because of our city ordinance. So we want to be careful. As my wife stated in her letter, she couldn't be here, she's ill. I just think we got to be really careful because, I'm going to call you out, Jeff. I mean this in a nice way. You made that comment about in 2020 that we have rules for a reason to follow. And we didn't follow them, me included. I own it. We didn't follow the rules, and we have no right to change that. We're not the law. The laws are there for a reason, for us to follow them. We all put our hand up, took an oath to take this office to uphold those laws. And we didn't do it. I have a question for, he's going to tell me it's not, but the street access, it is possible to put that street through from Peace Place up. I wish Jeff McCormick was here to answer the question. Because I, I just, I've been at these meetings for over four years. Haven't missed a one. I just, I've always stuck in my head how he said, this land is not conducive to what you want to do. But we just plowed ahead. And I'm not against them building this here, I'm truly not. My job depends on Mitchell growing. So I've, I've decided to get behind this project because it's already been plotted. But I just think that we really, the word pause, I don't know if that's the right word or not. We're not, we're not following our own rules. Where's it going to stop? That's why I came here. I was going to be the guy that followed the rules. And I became part of the problem.
Other comments, questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. McArdle. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Barrington.
Aye.
Bathke.
No.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dosher. McArdle.
Six to one, motion carries. First reading on ordinance, oh, 2023, 14 supplemental appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2023. Ms. Elwin.
Mayor and Council, the supplemental appropriation ordinance, that's included in your packet, I'm trying to get it up here on the board at the same time. There we go. Okay, there we go. We'll supplement the 2023 budget in the amounts that are shown on the ordinance. Typically, we only do these supplemental appropriations for items that we've either received revenue outside of just our general operating revenue, or it's from a dedicated reserve for a specific purpose. The first one that you see there, the mayor's office Veterans Park, that's the annual operation cost of the Veterans Park. That comes out of a dedicated fund set aside for the Veterans Parks. The second one under administrative boards, the sports and authority promotion, that's the SEA. The money that supports that supplement is actually received from the hotel bid tax. The last one that you see under general fund would be traffic. And that would be individual people. You saw earlier on the automatic supplements that we had some insurance pays that we reimbursed. This one is for people that paid out of pocket, so we couldn't do it as a automatic reimbursement. Out of the entertainment tax fund, we have an amount of 18241. That's for the purchase of the ESPN, the former ESPN and Behavioral Health Building. It's been both things, across the street to the east from the city hall. And that is coming out of entertainment tax fund cash balance. And the last one, gas, oil, and tires, that's just in Palace Transit for the amount that they have over budget on gas, oil, and tires for 2023. But it's coming out of their fund cash. So I don't have to do a contingency transfer for that one later this year. Pretty small amount for other years. Sometimes we've had more than that, so we're happy with how that looks. You will see a contingency resolution at the next meeting, along with the second reading on the supplemental appropriations. I can answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I recommend approval on first reading.
Okay, questions? Comments? Entertaining motion? Motion by Mr. McArdle, second by Mr. Barrington. Discussion? Anybody in the House who wants to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Motion to enter into executive session according to South Dakota Code of Law 12523 legal. Motion by Mr. Goldammer, second by Mr. Barrington. Discussion? Anybody in the House who wants to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried after executive session.